When the community has very little information, it's not a way to effectively engage a community and really solicit feedback. Yeah, I'll go to a microphone and say something, but it doesn't, it feels more like a stunt than actually building something. Not anti-change, just anti-bad standing for change. Thank you.
Does anybody else want to speak that didn't sign up? No. Is there anybody online who would like to?
So let me take a look. There's one individual, Megan. Ms. Stellman?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry about that. So my name is Megan. I live at 34 Blanchard Boulevard. I just want to speak up and say that the comments are not being streamed on YouTube. I was able to access via Zoom, but otherwise people who are trying to watch them want to be here. Thank you.
I think that's been fixed, Ms. Stellman. Thank you very much for pointing it out, but I believe that is now live, but we're double checking that.
All right. Thank you.
At this point, there is nobody else with their hand up.
Okay. So we are moving on to routine matters. Approval of open session minutes from January 23rd, 2023. Are there any discussion or modifications? Do I have a motion to accept?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Cobblemeier and second by Mr. Deppman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Communications and commendations. Mr. Lee.
You, Madam Chairperson. So I want to start tonight just recognizing the accomplishment of one of our staff members. For those of you who know Bob Brook, Bob Brook has been a teacher in this district since 1985. He's been the head coach of our basketball team for 34 seasons. And on January 23rd versus Durfee, he had his 400th career win, which is quite an accomplishment. I wanted to mention it just to congratulate him for that accomplishment, but also to just point out that is the least that he does in this district. For those of you who know Bob, he'd kill me for even saying any of these words tonight. He's a humble, but competent compassionate educator, a gentleman in all regards. He teaches kids who need it most values such as respect, traditions, and accomplishment. He works in our alternative program at the high school and has done so for quite an extended period of time. And I feel like it would be dishonor not to recognize his achievement tonight, so I just wanted to make you all aware of that.
Excellent.
Also, in terms of accomplishments, we, over the very, very cold weekend, we sent a number of students to December. The Massachusetts School Band Association Festival. They went Saturday morning and God bless each and every one of them. I hope they had hats and coats and everything else. They were wildly successful. Students from over 30 Southeastern School District came and auditioned on that particular day. And I have two pages of our own participants who've got to move on to the next piece of that program. And time does not allow me to read all their names, but I would suggest they've done a fantastic thing here. And their talents have been recognized by outsiders who can now see that the wonderful program that Mr. Sartell runs. So I wanted to bring that up. In addition, we, in your package, you will find the South Shore Educational Collaborative January Minutes. Your reading perusal, also copies of the approved finance and operation meetings from November and January, and copies of our, I'm sorry, policy and education minutes from January 12th. But that's all I have.
Congratulations, Mr. Crook. And also, Mr. Sartell did share with us the names of the winners of the semesters.
Because they came in late this afternoon.
Yes, so congratulations to all of them. Any comments or from the committee? No. Moving on to Gifts to Schools. All right. Gifts to Schools. Again, I'll read them all and ask for one motion. Base A text textiles, six checks totaling $411.25. South Middle School Gifts to Schools totaling $2,448.17. Six deposits totaling $2,000 from the grade seven field trip. One deposit in the amount of $79.80 towards the Washington DC trip. One deposit in the amount of $368.37 from the WDC Trip Savers fundraiser. And Highlands Elementary School Gifts to Schools totaling $1,865.64 from Shutterfly. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Devon and a second by Ms. Cobblemeier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you all. Moving on to, from superintendent's staff. We're going to continue the discussion of the task force recommendations.
Obviously, this evening, part of the discussion is to ensure that the committee has received any needs or facts. Considering what has been proposed from the task force, I sit here willing to, again, collect any data or any other information that the committee might seek to be deployed in the process.
So with that, I know that we're going to talk about kindergarten upcoming, but two of the recommendations that were made by the task force were the use of the Old South and the possibility of moving special education, some special education to Highlands and Liberty once the Old South is offline and the New South is opened, once the fifth grade is moved from Hall's and Liberty, excuse me, Highlands and Liberty to South, freeing up space at both of those schools to potentially make room for a special needs program. So those two were the two that I would hope that would have some conversation tonight. With that, I open it up to the committee. Ms. Tuffy.
So could you talk about the issue with the switchgear at the New South and whether, what will happen if that does not arrive on time? Will it delay the move of the kindergarten and preschool to South? Let's see, ramification of that switchgear not?
Sort of focus on the switchgear itself. It's a global issue right now in terms of getting switchgear. We're still awaiting the switchgear replacement at the high school. It's running on a temporary set of switchgear at this point in time. Should it be delayed? It is scheduled to arrive in late July, which is a timeframe that could work. However, if that does not happen, it is possible it could delay the opening.
They are working on contingency plans to see how they could electrify the building prior to September to allow them do so. To open in the entire Old South and fifth grades from Libyan Islands to move in. But that could alter the timeline that we're working under. And any significant adjustment to that timeline does call into questions of timing of some of the things the task force considered.
Point of information, Madam Chair. I walked the site last Thursday and talked to the superintendent. I was told that the switchgear was not going to be a problem based on what I've, what he told me as far as the scheduled delivery.
I think they're confident.
Yes, I was.
You know, part of my job is to be a naysayer.
We ordered.
There is a concern.
We ordered the switchgear for the high school, as you know.
Several years ago, we actually paid additional money to expedite it. That switchgear is still not here.
Because it's a custom made. It's not, it's not, it's not an off-the-shelf.
Right.
Switchgears now have more safety interlocks and things such as that, but the old fan has to be remanufactured.
Talking to the OPM and similar conversations that you have had, again, I think they feel somewhat more confident. But I do not think they're in a position to say with 100% certainty that it's going to arrive on time.
When are you saying we get that information?
Our next, our next school building is Monday.
Okay.
So we'll get the latest update then. But there was also some concerns with technology as well.
We had a meeting today about technology. I think we have a good contingency plan for that.
I feel more confident about that than I do the switchgear at this point in time.
You know, so all, anything that could impede the opening of the school, we have been meeting frequently around, and it's all lead time, as you know. In terms of the field and the global field. So with technology, I think we have a good plan in place. With switchgear, we'll continue to monitor it. Again, they know when it's expected to come. It's shipping out of South Carolina, I believe. When we have the right information that makes us confident, we'll share that.
So when you have the shipping number, there'll be?
Just to clarify, just to clarify, Mr. Lee, worst case scenario, can't open South on time, so you're not going to move the, and that would eliminate using the Old South, which is part of the?
It would delay it.
It would delay. Is that, you're given an extra year by the?
Nobody's given us anything. So, you know, we obviously have been talking to as many people as we can about what the implications could be. It is my belief that understanding what our overall intention with the building would be, that the MSBA would be open to allowing us to have the year to do so. As I mentioned earlier, any significant delay to the scheduled opening of New South has a greater impact on anything the task force has put forward in the actual New South itself. You know, that entire summer is a good period of time to get New South open and allow the kids to get in there. But there's work in some of the plans that you've seen of some of the considerations that you've been exposed to. There would have to be work done in the Old South to make it appropriate for another purpose. If that window doesn't exist, that would delay it obviously up to and including a year.
Any other questions?
Through the chair. I was just wondering if you made a decision. I know a number of parents were concerned about the kindergarten registration deadline and putting a down payment by February 28th. And is there a way to extend that based on, you know, making decisions on this or how are you going to handle that?
We'll be offering full refunds to anybody who didn't want the placement.
So the issue with not collecting anything is it creates a tighter and tighter window for families to pay a significant amount of money.
Right.
We already struggle collecting all the money. And so the amount that they'd be paying on a monthly basis would go up significantly.
So we are in a better position to refund any money that people have sent in to hold their place should they choose not to come.
Than to not collect anything and try at the last minute to gather it all. Once the school year begins, you know, it becomes problematic for us and the families, because if you can't make the payments.
We'd be moving you into a different setting. Midstream, and that's not better than anybody.
Right. So they will continue to have the February 28th deadline with the preference that they will get a refund should?
Full refund.
Okay, thank you.
Back to Ms. Tuffy.
Comment or question? So one thing that was noted at our previous meeting is we don't really have specific numbers about how much each option would save. And I would like to see those numbers before I make any, any decision. And of course, we're waiting for the full budget numbers to come in, if any, from the mayor, but.
Any other questions? So if the New South is delayed by any, any time whatsoever, we need to get the fifth graders from, from Highlands and Liberty into Old South and the current students that are in the Old South into the New South. Whenever that, hopefully that's going to be September 1st, our September beginning.
I would suggest.
Without a crystal ball. If New South is ready to go by September, we would move the entire existing Old Souths.
Grade six, seven, and eight.
And the fifth grades from Libyan Highlands into the New South building. That, in my head, is the worst case scenario. What that would not allow for is any opportunity to revamp the existing Old South building and would delay other elements that might be considered by the school committee in terms of what the task forces put forward.
Right.
Because we would need time to fix the building.
Right. And as I've said before, and I'm going to share it again now, is I would not be comfortable moving the kids from inadequate or from the homeschools in the middle of the year. So if we couldn't get Old South up and running, if this body decides to open the Old South as a pre-K kindergarten center, because we haven't even voted on that, we're having, we're just having discussions on that. If we're not ready by school opens in September, I would want a delay every year.
Yeah, and I serve at the pleasure of the committee.
And I think that option is there in terms of waiting the entire year. You know, the feedback that we've been able to gather, I don't think it'd be a mammoth issue. As you know, unlike East, if, if the whole project at New South was delayed, everybody can, in essence, stay where they are. So that's a good position for us to be in because we have options. But again, if we needed a year, I believe the year is in the table.
Through the chair. Another question. How much work needs to be put into it to retrofit it and to make it safe for kindergartners and preschoolers?
Well, again, we walked the facility with the maintenance and the DPW. I think if we had two months, we could get it done. If we don't have the two months, and I mean a full two months, I think it becomes problematic. So that, as I mentioned, if the New South project gets delayed in any significant fashion, I think that would know it becomes too small.
So it can be worked on over the summer?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And when we did walk the building, we had the conversation about the first floor being pre-K potentially and the second floor being kindergarten. And there's plenty of room for everybody.
Yes.
And we need to talk about whether or not we're going to do any homeschool or not do any homeschool. The idea, or what we've discussed, if anybody has any questions, what we discussed is moving every kindergarten classroom to the Old South.
Recommendation, that's the path that the committee chooses is to move all kindergarten classes there.
So again, it would open up any classes that have a homeschool now for other uses, media center, or anything else that those schools potentially may not have at this point. And all element, I mean, all kindergarten students would be in that building. And would also free up space at high school. There's been a lot of contention about the fact that preschool is still in the high school. And that would free that space up as well to be used for purposes. I know we have some other options that we could potentially use that for as well.
All you have said is accurate.
Yes, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Information. I'm hearing the switchgears could be delivered sometime in May.
Excellent.
Okay. As far as actual fit on South, most of that will be toilets and things such as that, lowering it to the heights that are appropriate for that age group and putting handrails, the new types of handrails as they go up and down the staircases and things like that. So, I mean.
There's also a good deal of asbestos.
Abatement.
Oh, that's always nice.
Yes. It has to be done as well.
Well, that's going to be, that would be contracted out, wouldn't it? That is contracted.
That's not what we're talking about. I assume it would be contracted out.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions about any of the other recommendations? I know we're not talking about redistricting at any point at this point. Any questions?
Tuffy's point. Are there any other pieces of information you'd like me to collect for you?
The finances, obviously. On all four.
If we're going to, excuse me, through the chair, if we're going to be taking all of our pre-K and K to the Old South, probably have to name that something different at some point in time.
Yes.
Old South just has a bad look to it. What is going to happen with the inadequate school?
There's opportunity to lease it out to other organizations. We'll kind of kick the tires and stuff like that. But it's depending on the direction you guys choose to go.
That would be revenue. That would be revenue.
On the right side of the.
Yes, maybe calling from the presentation, were Old South to become an early education center? Yes, we could rent out or lease out inadequate. It would also allow for this office to move into the basement of Old South. You stick an E on it, it's not that bad, Old South in Southsboro.
The Old South.
Which could then allow the launch program, which is currently at 74 Pond Street, to move into this site. And that becomes another revenue potential stream for the town.
Right. Right, because.
It's a bit creative, you need.
Town hall has some ideas for use of that building as well, so. Okay, so it would be, buildings that would be freeing up potentially. Okay. Any other questions on? I have questions. Special education, if we were to move special education to Liberty and Highlands, what programs do you foresee?
The one that we've discussed with the special education department is some segment of the programs that are over at Flaherty.
I had conversations with the administration over at Flaherty, with the special ed director and other elementary leadership of the SPED program.
There is a question of the intensity and amount of services that are needed to be provided at Flaherty. To have a segment of that, that population move to another site could provide some relief to Flaherty as a whole and also provide different opportunities for students in another location. So I would suggest one program would relate to the existing Flaherty programs. The other programs that we've been discussing really relate to our language-based population. We have a very strong program at Hollis that services a very specific profile of student with language-based needs. However, that is not representative of all of our students who have some type of language-based disability. So the creation of a similar but not identical program to manage our services around language-based IEPs would be the other option that would be explored and have been discussed.
They'd be creating a new program around language-based that we don't currently serve.
Right. So right now, you know, one of the issues that the district has faced for a couple of years is that, again,
the Hollis program serves a very specific profile of student. So those kids do very well, not only in Hollis, but when they get to the middle school level, they tend to do very well there. They've had the requisite supports coming up. Some of our other language-based students that don't have the exact same profile really have no.
Not the best place to go when they're in elementary.
And when they get to the middle school, it really becomes difficult to find the appropriate placement for them. Because they haven't been able to get all the requisite support that could lead them to be more successful at the middle school. So I think the conversation we've been having is that there is a need. And I think we have demonstrated the ability to create programs that, that service schools need. And I think that has a long-term benefit in making sure that kids are more successful in the middle school.
And just to answer some of Mr. Sartell's questions about the reason why we're, we're looking at redistricting some of the students to South, to the New South, why we're talking about that redistricting. Yes, East can accommodate, but South will be underserved. And what are some of the, what are some of the advantages or disadvantages there?
Well, one of the things that the task force discussed was that three-three split. Right now, you get a four-two split. It really breaks the town up into a one segment. And a larger population on the other side of town. You, you do have the ability to, you know, create that feeder system for the Flaherty programs into South.
That, as you know, the New South building is being designed with some of the special ed programming in mind. There's an entire section of the building dedicated to that population of students.
The short-term impact is negligible in the sense that you don't have to redistrict anybody in the first four years, which is raised. However, the populations continue to go up and I believe it's year five that you exceed the 800 over at New South. So you'd have to make some move. The, the logical move is to move kids into Ross. Ross continues to be a smaller school in terms of numbers. So those are some of the things that were discussed. You know, we, at one point in time, as you know, the district split Hollis and Hall. And I think that was a bad model in terms of the impact it had on kids who were in the same classroom one year and then went off to two different middle schools in the next. Keeping it kind of more linear in terms of what school is going where, I think is helpful in some regard. And I think it changes, it changes the overall demographic itself and it is somewhat, and I think that's positive thing.
Through the chair. Isn't one of the cons to sending some students from Flaherty and Morrison to South is that it would actually fill South to capacity?
It brings it closer to the capacity. And see, yes, some of the cons are clearly outlined by the folks who have spoken. You've got moving.
Moving kids across town.
You would be.
And, you know, whether it's Morrison or Flaherty, some families are very, very close to East.
Yeah, that's not disingenuous at all. So that is a con. You know, you would have to redistrict at some point in time. You know, that's a potential con depending upon your perspective. You know, so everything is an option and everything is something that has a pro and a con to it. None of this is perfect and none of this is visible. And so it really is the conversations from here about what would you like? And, you know, we'll come back with numbers in terms of here's the money you might save. But, you know, the other way to look at it is from a district perspective over time, is it beneficial to have three schools from the East, three schools going to the South if you can make it work appropriately?
Well, I think personally, and I think from the parents, that they want a long-term solution and not something that's going to be, we're going to outgrow in four years.
If you move the kids into Ross, you wouldn't.
Right. So I think, you know, we have to take that into consideration as well. It's, it's going to be painful. Why do it twice? You know, if you're going to pull the Band-Aid off, you know, do it once and, you know, make a good decision based on long-term planning rather than just, you know, a couple of years. Because, you know, we could have projects that come in and increase the population. And then we may not even make it the four years. So I think we, you know, we definitely need to look at this, take a deeper dive and kind of look at all options and long-term, but with the costs associated, of course, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Through the chair.
Ms. Sarus. Just wondering, once all the students, they move over to the fourth and fifth move to New South, how many classrooms would open in those schools? And from there, if the kindergarten then moves, if we vote on that, to the Old South and special education moves into the classrooms, into Liberty and Highlands, how many classrooms are left? Are there classrooms left? Are all the rooms accounted for?
Well, depending, you said a lot, so.
Sorry.
When, when the fifth grade moves from Liberty and Highlands, okay, that's four classrooms in each building. That's the first and foremost, right? If you then decide to pull all the kindergartens into an early elementary center at Old South, well, Highlands has a kindergarten, Liberty has no kindergartens, Ross has two, Hollis has two, everybody else has one. So those classrooms would open up as well. If you then begin to put programs back into Liberty and Highlands, I would suggest you probably need two rooms at Highlands and you probably need one room at Liberty. That's a guess if you quote me on it.
So they would need two for special.
Right, but you've, you've just picked up four, right?
But you've also picked up the fourth graders also, because there, you have the fourth and fifth grade classes. Like right now at Highlands, you have fourth grade, take three classes. Highlands, are they?
Fourth grade at Highlands is four sections.
There's four and there's four, so there's eight classrooms that are basically.
Four, four, four.
So wouldn't that be eight if you have four fifth grade or fourth grade that are all moving to South in September?
But those fourth graders would be going into fifth grade classrooms. The other kids are gone, right? So when the fourth grade goes to what would have been the fifth grade classroom, but they do it in New South, those existing fifth grade classrooms are now open.
You're just freeing up. You're, because you're bringing, okay.
But they were leaving regardless.
Yeah.
So what you're really talking about is the fourth.
Just the fourth graders.
The fifth grade classes, so those four.
Four, okay. So you're three of four, four at Liberty and five at Highlands.
Right.
And then you backed along with what the SPED programming decided to put in there.
Any other questions?
Do Highlands and Liberty presently have rooms to accommodate media center, music room, and art room? Are they, do they have specific rooms for those?
I'll double check myself. I believe both of them have media rooms, but I'm not 100% sure. I want to be, like, when I answer your question. So I don't want to speak out here, but I will get you that information.
Thank you. So I know this is, I'm putting you on the spot, but ask you another question. So for the other schools, the other schools that, that have gone to East, do all of those schools have media centers, art rooms, music rooms currently when we freed up kindergarten?
I believe they all have media rooms. Some have art rooms.
Some have music rooms.
Some share art and music. You know, what we've been able to eliminate for most part is anything in the hallway, even on the stages and to that nature. Also depends on the SPED programming that's in there. You know, we take up a lot of real estate as a way to special education. But I can get your account of all of it.
I'd just be curious, since we freed up all this room.
Yep.
It's kind of like the high school. So if you just remember the high school 15 years ago, 20 years ago, there were about 3,500 students in it. Right now, there's about 1,600 students in it. We use every single room.
Right.
Build it, they come.
Right.
And so there's always a purpose for a room. So I can come back with art, music, SPED, and media center if that is helpful.
That would be helpful. Thank you. Any other questions at this point? No? We will move on then. Administrative updates, the kindergarten numbers.
Kindergarten. So at this point, as of, I believe, earlier today, we have 313 students who have registered for kindergarten. That's total. That means full day and half day. Presently, 287 of those students have registered for full day kindergarten. 26 have registered for half-day kindergarten. We continue to take in registrations. We have not yet had the need to create a waitlist. These numbers are tracking almost identically to what we have this year. This year, we have 338 total students. So at this point in time, looking at these numbers, I would tell you that we're going to land right around that 338. But overall, the process has been going relatively smoothly and continue to do so.
And as was mentioned earlier, since we have not made a decision on the use of the Old South at this point, if people are uncomfortable with potentially moving their child to the Old South. If people are uncomfortable with potentially moving their child to the old self, if we do end up doing that for the September.
We refund their money.
Any other questions about kindergarten?
I have a comment, ma'am, ma'am, if I may.
Mr. Devon.
I remember, I think you and I were on the committee when we were first looking at opening up the inadequate.
Ten years ago.
Quite a while ago. And I remember quite a few people that were rather hesitant. Uh, people on this committee also, but I remember getting those children into that one. Great setting where they had the lunchroom and all things that were really geared to them. I think it really improved the learning environment for all of them. They were, they all were friends. They all knew each other and things like that. Now they have, it, the shame is they have to go to their neighborhood schools. And, but, and they'll link back up in junior high school per se, or at least the high school. But some of the people that were rather nervous about that, it wound up going away within months. It just wound up being such a, such a great idea. Um, I look forward to seeing what the program will look like after the old self, it, it being that type of a. You know, nurturing environment for all of the students. Thank you, ma'am, chief.
And as the superintendent had said before, all the kindergarten teachers will not be together. You know, they'll be located all, they'd all be working together, you know, the kids would start school at the same time that school opened and.
You know, some of the pros around doing something like an early elementary center is transportation. Uh, it is length of day, as I think I've mentioned already, uh, if you send your child to inadequate, your day is shorter than if you send your kid to homeschool. Remove that inequity. Um, and then to your point, uh, you'd have teachers as well, teaching the same content, being able to work collaboratively together. Uh, on not only curriculum, but also on student behaviors and other goals that they might set.
Through the chair. Um, I know I mentioned this before about the half-day. Um, would you have two half-day? Or three?
Right this second.
It's twenty-six.
Right this second, I would tell you two, but that number's gonna change. I, I'd suggest it's trending towards three.
You think people will stay with half-day? You'll end up at three and. I guess for me, I'm thinking, what I mentioned before was the inequity of having. Morning and afternoon, when kids go to afternoon, they, you know, if it's a half-day, they miss the school. If it's a snow day, they don't go to school. Um, so kids that go half-day in the afternoons don't go as many days as the kids that go AM. Um, I think it's beneficial to go AM and it would be great if we could do, if we have half-day, we could be. It's possible that they could all be AM.
No, there's not enough teaching staff to cover them. Um, what we could take a look at is, is, I believe you know, we had sent out, I didn't do it. Uh, Ms. Benazir did it, sent out a survey of families about, would you be interested in flopping the half-days?
Right.
Uh, other delayed start versus an early release. And the feedback on that overall, um, it really has not been tremendous. Uh, but that does not mean we couldn't take a look at on days where, uh, we are forced into a half-day situation that we could alternate. Uh, but we have to go back out to those families to see if that's viable on their end. Uh, some, some schedules of, of parents are, are set on when, when they know their child will be in school. So if they, if they themselves set some flexibility, we could certainly take a look at that option.
Okay. And would this also, they, there would be no need to bus them to their homeschool. They'd be going right from their homes, right to, uh, Old South. If.
It'd be far more direct. Uh, we continue to explore what transportation could look like. We're involved. Transportation consultant, we've involved our transportation department. We have a couple ideas that we think would work, all are more efficient than what we're currently doing.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask one little question? Um, how was it decided whether you're AM or PM?
Bus.
It's typically bus.
It's bus, it's where you're, where you're physically located.
Because we have to run the town.
I think that's crazy, but.
And when did, when did they find out whether they're AM or PM?
Bus drive, as you let me know, we'll take care of it.
When do they find out when they're AM, whether they're AM or PM?
Uh, much later in the spring.
Well, aren't the routes already really established? I mean.
Uh, the week mark.
For the neighborhoods.
Here, uh, so that's. Again, it depends on how you wanna try to structure it. We had, we had multiple conversations about ways you could do a separate school. Uh, for instance, one idea is you could run a fourth tier, meaning that you could just have a kindergarten room at the end. So everybody's, they would move up or down based on that. There was some feedback in some of the PTO meetings that that wasn't preferable, because if you had an elementary age kid and a kindergarten kid. You'd like to be able to drop them off at the same time. So then we took a look at, could a bus pick up all the kids, go to the school, drop off the elementary kids? And continue on to Old South and drop the kindergarten kids off. So there are multiple ways to do it. Uh, again, all are more efficient than the way it's currently being done. Uh, and we'll continue to work on it, you know, it.
Yeah, I think that, you know, little kids should be on the bus as, not as, you know, a less time as possible.
I, I would concur.
Anything else from anybody else of kindergarten? Um, then we are moving on to the student representative updates. Who would like to begin?
Yes, I'll start. So, um, this Wednesday, there is going to be a meeting between a bunch of trade clubs. Related to this, um, new pride rally we're going to have in March. Related to just encouraging more student involvement in the school. So there are gonna be representatives from clubs, including the Gem Club, the Girls Empowerment Movement. Cultural Connections Club, Diversity Council, ASL Club. There's a bunch of different diverse students in the school to come together and brainstorm different activities. Related to what they do in their club and hopefully encourage underclassmen to get involved in the school. And just build unity between clubs, which will be especially helpful for fundraisers we do in the future. Uh, Wednesday's also Club Photo Day. So a lot of people are preparing for that, getting passes to take photos in their best attire. And then, uh, another thing to note, just a short note, is that winter sports are going to begin to wind down soon. So a lot of the spring sports are having preseason meetings. I know for girls golf, we're having one Wednesday as well. So Wednesday is a very busy day this week, but, um, a lot of people are excited for that to get out, you know, on the golf course. Just outside again for a lot of different sports.
Okay, okay.
Um, I'd like to begin with, uh, Interact Club. They're hosting a fundraiser for a local nonprofit that'll be selling carnations Valentine's Day. And, um, other than that, I'd like to, uh, recognize the people that did get into Samba just from the band. I don't know the kids from orchestra chorus, the list fully, so I couldn't, uh, do that. But, um, for senior Samba, we had Neo Peng on trombone, Allison Lee on trombone. Rohan Amatya on trumpet, Chloe Zhang on flute, Celia DePice on flute, Kelsey DiPaolo, French horn. Will Rafferty, who is not here, on baritone saxophone, myself on trombone. And junior Samba, we had two freshmen, Ruby Maggio on trombone and Tony Huang on trombone.
Oh, congratulations to all of them. I also am, don't take offense, but I was a band geek in high school and I played saxophone as well. So I know these auditions are, are very intense. So congratulations to all of you. I'm in preparation and, and being chosen. So congratulations. Anything else? Any questions from the committee for the student reps? Okay, moving on to Policy and Education Subcommittee, Ms. Tophie.
Thank you. Um, Policy and Education Subcommittee met on February second. Um, we were, uh, joined by our student representatives and, uh, Joella. And, and Matea, Momata, uh, from the Diversity Council. Who, uh, presented the case for changing level descriptions on the Guidance West guidance program of studies. Um, they feel that the current, uh, that level of description should be tied to the rigor of the course. Rather than, uh, perceptions of a student's intelligence or ability. So, um. They, uh, they are going to meet with Dr. Scully and Mr. Garafalo. Um, to look at the language describing the courses and then come back to us with. Any proposed changes they, um, they, uh, develop. Second, um, the committee discussed a proposal to de-level eighth grade Spanish classes. Um, we, the French, eighth grade French is already de-leveled. Uh, and, um. Uh, the director of oral language, Gail Ward, will be, uh, present at a, um, school committee meeting in March. To answer any questions that we have about that. Um, third, uh, we continued with. Uh, aligning Braintree, the Braintree Policy Manual with the MASC reference manual. We looked at section C, General School Administration. So you'll see in your packets, um. Uh, Policy CA, which is on administration goal, goal CB, the school superintendent. Uh, CBI, the evaluation of the superintendent, CCB, Staff Relations. Uh, CE, Administrative Councils and Committees. H Policy, Policy Administration. Um, CHC, Administration of in, Policy Absence and, uh. Um, the School District Annual Report. So of section C, the only policy that we currently have is the, um. Handbook policy. And so, um. We would like to, uh, add these policies. Uh, I've spoken to, um, school committee members in Weymouth and Quincy. They, uh. Is a pretty standard. The only. Uh, policies that we would change a bit from the MASC policy is CB. Um, there's an annual report that's discussed in CB and in, uh, the final one, CM. And, um, so. Uh, Mr. Lee mentioned that Braintree hasn't produced an annual report since two thousand and fifteen. Um, but Ms. Bernaza, uh, um, said at her previous school that Desi. Uh, required that. So that's something that we'll look into. Um, and, uh. So we will, uh, I'd ask the committee review these policies that were in your packet. Uh, for our, our next meeting. And finally, we have, um, policies that are up for second reading tonight. Uh, the first are the bullying policy review and update. Um. These are updated and reviewed in annually by School Council, CPAC, and Policy and Education Subcommittee. Um, the only changes that were, um. Just the formatting and a, a few minor language, uh, changes. So the first one is bullying policy. Are there any questions or comments about that? It's J I C F B, bullying, harassment, discrimination, discrimination, discrimination and hazing. And J I C F B slash R. Reference manual. If not, is there?
So I'd have a question. So the, the minor changes that we discussed in last meeting at the first reading, just there was.
There, there was some.
A wording changes.
The outline format was, was corrected. They, uh, that was just, uh. Typographical. And we added some consistent, consistent gender neutral language in part D. We put, we replaced E slash she with the word they.
Right.
And in the reference manual, uh, they just updated the school committee names, um, to present school committee. And they, uh, removed the reference to, uh, Mean Girls on page ten.
Right, Mean Girls, I don't know. Okay. Thank you.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we accept policies J I C F B and J I C F B R.
I have a motion by Ms. Cobble Mary and a second by Mr. Lynch. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Spanish unanimous.
And second, uh. Uh, the other policy that's up for a second reading is policy J K K A. Uh, physical restraint of students. As we said at the last meeting, previously Braintree did not have a formal policy in our manual. And, uh, its inclusion was a recommendation from a tiered review by Desi. Um, and it, uh, the accompanying physical restraint procedures, uh, document. That was developed by, uh, Petroclass Staff. That's been commended by the state and recommended as a model for other districts. So, um.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept policy J K K A, physical restraint of students' policy procedures.
Doug, exactly.
I have a motion by Paul Lemire and a second by Ms. Saros. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Spanish unanimous. Thank you.
And so our, finally, our next meeting will be on February ninth at five PM at Colbert.
Great, thank you very much. Um, moving on to Finance and Operations Subcommittee update. Um. So we met also on the second. Meeting on the ninth? Were we meeting on the ninth?
Meeting March fifteenth and then.
I think.
March ninth.
March ninth. I was gonna say February ninth, not this Thursday. Okay, thank you. You confused me. All right, March ninth. Um, so we're also, we have a March ninth. Um, our meeting was the second and we meet back-to-back with, um, Policy and Education. Um, so at our meeting, um, we continue to discuss and review, uh, the budget projections for FY twenty-four. And we will continue to do that and hopefully have a presentation for you at our next meeting. Um, a preliminary, uh, review. And then, um, we discussed, um, the Early Childhood Center proposed rate increase. Um, again, it's in your packet. Uh, I'm not sure if, Mr. Lee, you would like to speak to this or?
I, I can speak to it briefly, but happy to answer any questions. Uh, the preschool program at the high school, uh, in this capacity, actually is a class. That our high school students take. Uh, it teaches them how to work with, um, young children. Uh, so, uh, we have two populations of students, one that come on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays. The other only come on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Uh, the fees for those kids to participate in the program, uh, haven't been changed in almost a decade. Uh, it was seven hundred and fifty dollars, uh, for the three-day program payable in three installments. Uh, the proposal is to raise that to eight hundred dollars, a fifty-dollar increase. And then for the program that only offered two days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, it had been five hundred dollars. And the proposal is to up that to five hundred and thirty-five dollars. Uh, the money goes to supplies and materials and other activities that, that they do with the kids. Um, but given how long it's been since we've increased this and given, uh, inflation and everything else, I still have that.
Have we also discussed, um, adding the yearly fee increase that some of the other fees?
Not to this particular program.
Okay.
Um, it, it kind of runs off a different revolving account, but, uh, we certainly can. I mean, as you know, baked into all the other fees is a two-point-five percent increase year-over-year.
I'm not suggesting that we are. I was asking if we're, we're recommending it.
No, this is just a straight-up increase.
Okay.
Through the chair. I was just wondering, how much will this generate increasing the fifty-dollar increase, um? And the thirty-five, how much will this generate?
Maybe a little over a thousand dollars. We, we're not talking large sums of money.
But it'll help cover the cost.
It helps, helps cover the cost. Again, supplies and materials, it's all consumable, so that type of program anyway.
Okay, and no additional staff? It's just covering?
No, no, no additional staff.
Very healthy program. Kids love it. Don't kids love it?
Okay, thank you.
It's adorable. Any other questions, Mr. Devon?
On that, um, that program onto itself, you, you're, you're starting that first spark of a child that wants to become a teacher. My daughter took it, you know, and I remember her going, kids? Yeah, I'm all set with that. Well, now she's majoring in education and all that. And it's, it really, that, that program changed her mind. She met some very sweet little kids. And there were some that were a little bit more difficult and, you know, it just, and there were so many of her classmates. That it just ignited something within them and you see it happen. And you can almost see the change come in them as they're, oh, wait a second, you know, I'm not feeling too well. I gotta take care of myself. Cause I don't wanna miss my time with my kid, as she put it. So, uh, worthwhile program, the fifty dollars. It helps cover things. Okay, great. Um, and I do believe they get a certificate at the end that's applicable.
High school students do, yes.
Right, I mean, it's, it's an excellent program for all, in the young children.
And it's great value.
True.
Through the chair.
Ms. Saros.
Um, with this program, unbelievable. I know I went to preschool in a high school. Great for the students. Have we thought about transportation if these students, if these children are moved to Old South, like?
This program, this program. It's a program for high school students.
Oh, hi.
So it's.
You would enroll, which apparently you did, you enroll in the class. The families bring their kids in. But we're not shipping the high school kids over to an early elementary center.
So this is in the preschool.
This is.
Okay.
And then the parents transport their own children. They're on no buses. Parents transport their own kids.
Like daycare.
I was thinking it's the, the kind of the integrated preschool.
No.
Where the, it's completely different. That would move, but those parents bring them.
Oh, we bus those kids. Hundreds of those students, we bus.
The kids at this group, this high school student.
Is that right?
No.
It's a class.
It's a class.
Mr. Devon.
I do believe they evaluate them too and see any child that may need services. So they say, you know, the earlier you intervene, it, 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 in more apt, shall we say, get them on the right path. There's so many positives here.
Yeah, great program.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So the proposal is for the three day program. Currently, it's seven fifty to increase by fifty dollars to eight hundred. And for the two day program, currently five hundred, to increase it by thirty five dollars to five thirty five. Are there any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion? The, just the Finance and Operations voted unanimously to move this forward to the full committee with approval.
So move, Madam Chair.
This is the first reading. But the, in March? Is it March that they go out to?
Yeah, for enrollment.
Yeah.
Go out very soon.
Right, so in March is.
Send my motion.
Okay. You rescind it?
Yes.
Because it's first reading?
Yes. I'm not a first reading guy.
Do you have any questions? And it's time, it's time.
I don't like, I don't like single motion. I think it's the bad precedent. Going back to when things would rush through.
But then we wouldn't be able to vote until March, until the next committee meeting.
That's the next time you gather.
And when do the, when does it go out to the?
Well, from what we're discussing here now, March seventh.
Do you want to skip the first? I mean, do we need to have a second reading?
Mr. Devon opposes.
Well, wait a second.
Taking.
And someone else.
You know, not to be a stick man, that's what I'm being.
You can vote.
Say either committee.
If you'd like to, but.
I'm going to make a motion to accept it.
Okay.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Devon. We have a motion by Miss Sowers and second by Mr. Devon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Mostly because it's time, it's time critical.
Fully concur.
Thank you. Okay, and then moving on to consideration of authorizing the superintendent of schools to submit a statement of interest for the MSBA for the high school.
So I believe you all have a copy of this year's rendition of our statement of interest for Braintree High School. As you know, we submit the statement of interest. The MSBA either invites us into their process or does not. We are trying to get this to you early. For those of you who have done it before, there's some very clear voting language that has to be acknowledged, not only by this body, but also by the town council. So the deadline to submit this SOI is in April. However, Senator Crofton has done a great job putting it together now. So we'd like to get it through the system so that we can make sure we submit on time.
So with that, we have very specific language for the motion. So I've asked Ms. Cobble Mary to read the motion.
So resolved. Having convened in an open meeting on February sixth, two thousand and twenty three, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the School Committee of Braintree, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated February first, two thousand and twenty three, for the Braintree High School located at one twenty eight Town Street, Braintree, Mass, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority number five, replacement, renovation, or modernization of the school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. Priority number seven, replacement of or in addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with the state and approved local requirements. And thereby, further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment for the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits to the town of Braintree or the Braintree School Department to file an application for the funding for the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
I have a second.
Second.
A second. I have a motion by Ms. Cobble Mary and a second by Ms. Tuffy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Is this number seven?
No.
I think it is.
I think it's.
Number six?
Is it six? Six times the charm.
Let's go with that.
We'll see. We will, we will see. Okay, so with that, we've come to the end of our agenda. We will, at this point, move into executive session. Consideration to enter executive session pursuant to chapter thirty A, section twenty one A three, to discuss strategy for the negotiations of collective bargaining as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the legal position of the school committee as declared by myself, the chair. We will not be returning to open meeting, so the open meeting will be ending. So with that, I need a roll call vote in order to go into executive session. Mr. Devon? Ms. Tuffy?
Aye.
Miss Saros?
Aye.